There we go, alright. Hey everybody, this is show one thousand two, let me repeat, I'm putting this on repeat. Alright, hey everybody, this is Chris with show number one thousand and two, today I have a guest in studio. Y'all know show one thousand two is the rubberneck of talk radio. How y'all like the new intro that? Uh, it don't sound, it sounded better when I did it in the mirror. But today we're getting a little bit serious here on, a lot serious on show one thousand two. I have Ashton P. Woods, he is a candidate for at-large position four here in the city of Houston. As if, I'm gonna let him explain what the position actually is, but it's basically is one of those things I always talk about. I always talk about political positions and these non-glamorous political offices that really hold to, that really hold the key that we have to pay attention to as far as um, city councilman, sheriff, district attorney. Like I say, um, any local, any local or state office is basically an office that we need to pay attention to. But I'm glad to see that we're getting new blood, new youth, vigor, life into the political process which, like I say, I don't think it's new, it's just time, you know, it was like in, in baseball or whatever. I could use a bad sports metaphor, but we get to the point that, I'm not saying out with the old and in with the new, but hey, life's a cycle and it's next up and now it's the um, millennial generation could be the X, Y, Z generation. I don't know which generation is, but all I know is that people over thirty or hitting thirty, it's your time to step up to the plate. Especially because I'm, I'm turning old, I need y'all to take care of it. But right now, like I say, I'm going to let him introduce himself, Mr. Ashton P. Woods, how you doing?
Hey, what's going on Chris? So listen, I'm running for Houston City Council at large five, uh, not four, uh, which is a um, uh, uncontested, was a contested seat, but the incumbent is term limited and that's Jack Christie.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that uh, about the seat is that, is it, is it one of five at-large seats? Um, so which means it's not an actual council district, it covers the entire city. So, we work just like the other city council members would, except we're like, I guess you can put it as little, little mini mayors with votes of council members.
Okay, so this is the way, this is the way I look at it, I look at it as like, okay, you know how, let's say, you know you have like your House of Representatives? And you have your senate, so on a smaller scale, the at-large, the at-large um, council members would represent the entire city?
Correct.
And you say it's five?
Yeah.
How many, how many city councils?
So sixteen total.
Okay.
So it's um, let me make sure I got it right, because it's, it's, I think it's A through K.
Right, I remember they just, I remember not-
Because they split D into K back in twenty eleven through the census standards and so that's how you got so many council member seats now because of the twenty ten census. So you might see more council districts changing in twenty twenty after, oh well, in twenty twenty one, oh when the next election comes because our population has increased. So that means they're gonna have to either add more seats or change how the structure is and uh, with the way the seats are set up.
Yeah, so give us a little, give me a little bit of your background, um, give us a little bit of your background and what, what made you decide to run?
So, here's the thing, um, I decided to run because I'm tired. I'm tired of always talking to people who are running for office to talk to the, to, or convincing those people to talk to those who are closest to the issues that we have in the city and in the state and even in this county. And because as an activist with BLM Houston and as an individual activist, the, and when I say BLM Houston, I mean Black Lives Matter Houston. Um, we and, and myself as an individual have always worked to push for state laws to change successfully. We have gotten people elected successfully, we've gotten candidates out of races successfully, see Laura Moser. So here's the thing, um, instead of influencing platform, instead of advising, sometimes it just feels right to do it yourself.
Right.
I may not be perfect, I'll never be perfect, but at least I am close to the problem, right? I'm running because I haven't had health insurance since twenty fourteen and I'm HIV positive. Which means that I've had to rely on Ryan White funds and Hopwood to get housing assistance at points in towns when I couldn't afford the rent when, when work was slow. Or uh, ADAP which helps with HIV medicine. Um, you know, thinking about how the healthcare network in the city of Houston could actually be expanded while we're waiting on the Gertlock in Washington to give us Medicare for all.
Okay.
There are things that we can do and I also think about the infrastructure of the city, which is in my opinion, not that great. And depending on where you live at, we're developing faster than their reinforcing infrastructure. And one of the bigger issues for me is public safety through infrastructure in the context that um, you hear them there talking about increasing the police force, the district attorney asking the, the commissioner's court for money for a hundred more district attorneys. And you, moreover, you think about the police force, you think about increasing public safety. Well, that looks like going into the neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks and building sidewalks. Not redoing the sidewalks that already exist only and not just in phases, but actually targeting areas that are heavily populated that don't have sidewalks, open ditches with bus stops next to them, hit-and-run accidents that happen all the time in the city. You know, so when you put streetlights up and you, and you, and you properly pave roads instead of just filling in potholes, but actually rebuilding the structure of the streets. People can walk safely, they can ride their bike safely, people can drive like they need to and you can see what's coming. Or at least you can stand at a bus stop safely while you're waiting on the metro.
Okay.
You know, so the other piece is, I'm also just really tired of, for lack of a better phrase, I don't beg people, but I feel like in the last two years, I've been begging city council members in multiple ways to step up and stand up against Turner, who is our current mayor. And for full disclosure, I supported uh, Sylvester Turner in twenty fifteen and you know, I fully regret that because this man has turned into a dictatorship and he's no better than Donald Trump to me in some ways. This is not to say that he hasn't done good work, this is not to say that he isn't doing good work, but the things that he could do for the people and the city council members could do for the people in the city is to make the city more welcoming to the people who already live here. As opposed to casting the, the oar or the, of the air that Houston is a welcoming city quote-unquote for people who are coming to Houston to visit and for people who are coming to live in Houston to visit. Which cuts out people who have been looking for jobs for years, the underemployed, not the unemployed. The underemployed who are no longer counted in statistical data by the federal government of the city of Houston for that matter. Who have been looking for work for years and working non-traditional jobs for years and still having to pay taxes and still having to survive and thrive in this city while people come and move here and do better than the ones who have been here building it, putting into the culture and the flavor of this city like we have been doing for all of this time.
Alright, alright, so what I'm gonna do is that I'm gonna take a, I'm gonna take a quick break and I'm gonna be, we'll be back with Ashton P. Woods, candidate for position five, Houston, not five, four.
It's five.
Why, wait, why I keep getting five and four?
Cause you want me to run against Amanda Edwards?
No, well, you know, I don't know, I give my council at-large, it's five.
It's only five.
Okay, it's five, alright, we'll be back in a second, what I wanna ask you when we come back is I'm gonna talk about um, I wanna talk about experience, right? Cause I, you know, I think that's a red herring thing, but I want you to explain this thing about experience, you know, yes. I got a couple of things I wanna say about that too, but hey y'all, y'all stay tuned, we'll be right back, Mr. Ashton Woods, candidate for?
Houston City Council at large five.
Alright, at large five, alright y'all, y'all stay tuned. Alright everybody, we are back, we are back, hey, this is Chris Leger with show one thousand two, like I said, we're back with Mr. Ashton P. Woods, council, candidate for city council position at-large number five, number five, I definitely know number five. Now, like we were saying before, I was getting five confused with four because I was thinking about, you know, I was thinking about Jolanda Jones. Not being, no, Jolanda Jones got replaced by Jack Christie.
Who was in five?
Okay, so yeah, Jack Christie, Jack Christie is term, wait, he's been there eight years now?
Well, remember he got in before we changed the, the uh, tournament rules because it was three by two? I'm sorry, two by three, which means you had two, uh, three two-year terms?
Yeah.
And then you, now we switch over to two by four, so this last election was his, his last seat. So basically, if you, if you got elected in twenty eleven, um, you, you basically technically serve eight years. If you serve those first two-year terms, the, your first two-year terms, then yeah, you got that. Um, so other people who came in in twenty fifteen are subject to um, four-year terms, like Amanda Edwards. She's up and then this, this will be her last time she'll be able to run for city council.
Okay, so I'm actually, let me ask you this question now, let's talk about experience, right? Now most people, not most people, let me start, I hate um, using um, what they call that, um.
They had said.
Yeah, they had said, I think it's something else called, it's called, you know, pulling it out your butt, but there's another kind of statistic for it, uh, generalized statements, okay?
Right.
The, for um, generalized statements, I'll get a shout out to Lamont Antror, this is where I got that from, generalized statements. I might be saying it wrong, Lamont, if I'm saying it wrong, help me out, but now, experience. So they would say, so they would say, most people run say, I have the experience, what does that mean?
I don't know, that's an individual trait for each person, I could run on experience if I wanted to, community experience, you know? Here's the thing when we talk about experience.
You think being a community organizer is a good thing?
I do.
For politics?
I do.
Do we have an example of somebody who's a community organizer?
Me.
You know, okay, got into politics?
Yeah.
Alright.
Um, uh, councilman, council member Khalid in the city of South Fulton? That got established as a, as a new city, has an all-black judiciary and all-black city council? Remember? So you think about experiencing that context, experience is relative. We're, we're looking for, what I look for in a candidate, which is something that I hold myself to as a candidate, is for people who are closest to the, who have an understanding of those closest to the problem, that is a theme. You cannot heal this city from the woes of climate change, from violence, from overpolicing, from um, you know, lack of transparency and corruption if you're not listening to the people who are closest to the problem. Many people with the experience want to run to be the voice of people, I'm running to be a voice with the people. I open my mouth and I hold the door open to bring people into the room and then I shut up and I'm going to listen. Which is something that's always been my mantra, something that you've known about me for a few years now. And I believe that experience, you know, should lend us the opportunity to keep our ears open to continue to learn. But ego gets in the way because we're human, right? But that's not an excuse. And when we have elected officials who think that they're, they should be treated specially, special, that they are celebrities and that they should be held to higher esteem out of the context of respectability politics and tell it to tenth mentalities. You have conversations about experience in places like this where experience has gotten us nowhere.
Alright, so the question, another question I would have is experience, now, some people that's running for office say they have the experience that they can, they got the experience that they know the people who in politics where they can get things done.
Right.
We have the, I, like they might say, I have the personal relationship to get things done. How do you, how do, how do you, how would you build up personal relationships with, let's say your fellow council members and others? Because you know, once you get elected, you'll be like the new kid on the block.
Right, so here's the thing, running this campaign has taught me one thing, it's no different from community organizing already for me. I'm used to the press attention, I'm used to the bashing, I'm used to the praise, I'm used to everything that comes with being an activist, now a term candidate. And I believe in being a team player, so me running does not exclude the fact that I've had to work with these people for the last four to six years, even longer depending on which elected office they're in, to get things done in my role at Black Lives Matter Houston or as an activist in general. Testifying in committees at the Texas Legislature when other people don't show up or don't have the means to show up to go and say, listen, there's a sea of people behind me who are against the will of the people who are pushing for these particular bills to be passed and I'm standing here alone doing things to say, listen, and with people sometimes, you know, when they can make it and say, listen. As an activist, these are the people I'm closely connected to and this is how they're gonna be affected. Imagine if experience turns into, if we morphed them, experience into something called partnerships. Meaning as city council members like the white boykins did today, here's the thing, I'm not a big fan of the white boykins on some of his stances. But what he did today in that letter to Harold Dutton uh, for filing a bill, where he wrote to Harold Dutton today, he filed a bill um, twenty-three eighty-three if I'm not mistaken, to separate Thurgood Marshall School of Law from T H U. And he filed that on March second if I'm not mistaken. And, and I think that experience should give way to people who can build partnerships, not just in the hardship of the city council, but to be able to reach to the state and the county level. City council members should be at the commissioner's court testifying against Kim Ogde like I was asking, you know, who, who wanted twenty million dollars or however X million dollars she wanted for a hundred new prosecutors as opposed to building out money for diversion and building out a better public defense program and actually talk about finding ways to work with the commissioner's court and the district attorney's office to decriminalize some things. And they'll go back and take what we learned from there and expand on the things that we can do from our positions as city council members. Um, within the powers that are given to us that don't overstep the mayor of course, right? Because there's certain things that council members can do without going through the mayor's approval. But also making sure that you stand up when the mayor decides to push through programs or ordinances, civility ordinances that attack the homeless community, right? That attack different communities, that, that, think about what's happening at Greenspoint right now. If you don't know, because of these civility or, ordinances, you know, can't have your stuff, if, if your stuff can't fit into a three by three by three box, you shouldn't have it if you're homeless, or you can't sit and stand on the sidewalk between the hours of X and X. There are people right now being cited at Greenspoint just for existing on a sidewalk, they may not even be homeless. But think about how we're looking at this new version of broken windows policing that's been bought in. Think about this no-knock raid that was so botched that they brought out uh, um, their police union president to spot off hate. When he fled from New York because he had to settle out of court when he was an officer for the NYPD for calling someone the N-word and beating them to a bloody pulp. So you tell me about experience, I will point you to the people, right? The people who actually care, I care, do you? Because it can't just be, oh yeah, we're gonna have a little forum and a little town hall to show you what we've been doing, let's talk about what you need. That's what experience is, experience is continuing learning, continuing education, right? Would you listen to somebody who graduated from college in nineteen ninety-four knowing that somebody who graduated in two thousand four has to constantly spend money to get classes and certifications to re-up their, their expertise so that they can keep their jobs, right? So if you got elected in nineteen ninety-four and you're still here in twenty nineteen as an elected official, that's not experience, that's holding power.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I wanna uh, you know, get into, we can get into another segment about that, I want to talk about um, I want to talk about experience and as the years go by, do people who serve in public office with let's say twenty, thirty years of experience, do they become apathetic? Because you know, like when they first start off, I believe when they first start off, they're full of vigor and they're full of life, but once they get into that seat of power, they become kind of, I'm not, well, I shouldn't, I don't wanna say complacent, but they get trapped, they get trapped by the power, um, it feeds the ego. So question would be one of those things, you know, we can get to this after the next segment, like how would you, how would you keep yourself grounded? You know, you'd be going from um, Ashton P. Woods, the community organizer, to Ashton P. Woods, the person that's gonna be making decisions that they're gonna be blaming you.
They already do that though, right?
Yeah, but it's, I'll be a different type of blame.
Listen, I, as an activist along with other activists at my level, tend to have the, have, have been held at a higher standard than current elected officials and have had to answer questions that elected officials should have been answering and have had to handle decision-making processes on committees and boards that I'm on with said elected officials so that they can go back and vote on these things, so it's no different from being behind the scenes and just moving up because I'm gonna get blamed anyway regardless if I didn't do it or not, I'm here to do the work.
Well, that's what's up, that's why you got, that's why I say, everybody you got to run, we can go from complaining to getting, getting to the fight. But everybody, we're gonna be back, this is show one thousand and two, we're gonna take another break here, um. I wanna let you all know, this forum is open to all candidates, anyone that's running for political office, that's holding political office. This show is open to anyone regardless of race, gender, socioeconomic status, sexual orientation, um, mental, well, mental capacity as evident, me hosting the show, but it's open to everybody, so if you got a point of view and you wanna be on, just hit me up, go to showonezerozero2.com, send me an email, chris@showonezerozero2.com, right now we're talking with Ashton, I gotta ask you what the P stands for?
Pierre.
Pierre, oh, I thought it was though.
Ashton Pierre Woods.
Okay, Ashton Pierre Woods, I put my own twist on it, that's, that's, that's sad, but um, you know, I thought it was Ashton Power Woods, you know?
I mean, it's interchangeable.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, don't, you know, that's my nickname, but what, I'm, I'm going off script right now, but this part's gonna be edited out. What I'm saying is um, we'll be back in a minute, but like I say, anybody wants to be on the show, you definitely just hit me up at uh, showonezerozero2.com or send me an email, chris@showonezerozero2.com, we're gonna be back on to ask Mr. Ashton about getting in power and staying grounded, keeping that fight going. Alright everybody, this is show one thousand and two. Alright everybody, we are back, that's right, I am back with Mr. Ashton Pierre Woods, candidate for position five, city of Houston. And what that, what that is, is that people who serve on city council that serve and they not, they don't represent a district, the different positions, one through what, five, they represent the entire city. So these are the guys, kinda like, you know, I, I don't know, to me they like kinda what the, the higher body, kinda like the higher body in city council, you know?
I wouldn't say that, then I, I mean, you mean like separated versus senate versus congress?
Yeah.
I mean, you could look at it like that, but the power dynamic is not there.
Yeah, now I wanna ask you, what I'm, the question I wanted to ask you about, let's say for instance, we talked, we talked about experience, right? You know, you discussed experience, anything like that, talked about um, working with other politicians, yeah? Also, I wanted to ask you about um, I wanted to also ask you about the future of Houston. What do you see as some of like the, let's say, narrow down like the top three major issues in Houston or problems in the city of Houston?
The first thing would be transit, access to transit and reliable transit. I think the Houston Metropolitan Transit Authority has, I'm sorry, the Harris County Metropolitan Transit Authority has been good about trying to get expansion under uh, Turner's administration. Um, so this is a lesson in knowing who to be mad at or knowing who to work with, right? Um, so, because the city of Houston is the seat of Harris County, they also get the majority of picks of the board for the Metropolitan Transit Authority. Um, and what that means is, is we have a direct say, not just at the ballot, but through our council members who elect those particular board members to do a particular job, or a specific job, to add rail lines, bus rapid transit, expand uh, transit hours, adding bus shelters, that type of thing. But we probably need to look a little bit more future forward, right? As far as transit is concerned, we need to talk about making sure that we have better traffic control. And what that looks like is having dedicated lanes for buses, that looks like expanding Metro Rail like I mentioned earlier, that looks like high-speed rail. That looks like multiple modes of transit that are so usable and so accessible and safe that people will get off the road and that pedestrians will also have a way to get out. Now, the second piece um, for me would be healthcare, I think that the city of Houston itself and in partnership with the state and the county can expand its current four clinics, I think the city of Houston has four clinics under the city of Houston Health Department at the current moment for three million people. Right, I think that we need to be able to expand that network by working with existing community partners and medical facilities and opening up our own storefronts. Um, so people can have access to mental healthcare network and, and actually see a doctor for a physical or a checkup and not have to pay for it, right? Medicare or healthcare for all in that, in that context. And what that looks like is just giving people access to a doctor, not just when they're sick, but when overall definitive care. You know, to, to remove those barriers to entry because a healthy Houston, healthy Houstonians in the future, healed Houstonians can thrive and build and can improve. The more, the better your body is, the better you can function, the more, more you can contribute to society. We have a lot of smart people here, you know, but a lot of people are hindered because they don't have access to healthcare and for sure they don't have access to proper transit in some cases, in a lot of cases. The third thing would be public safety, um, as I mentioned earlier, public safety through infrastructure. I really do believe that it is not right that I can walk into certain parts of Houston right now that have large populations but no sidewalks. And I bring that up because here's the thing, I've been riding, the whole time you've known me and the whole time I've been organizing in Houston, I've been riding the bus to those events, I've been on a bus, there are occasions where I might have had to borrow a car here and there or, or use an Uber when that became a thing, but here's, here's, here's the truth. I got a car a month and a half before Harvey hit Houston, right? And I still use the bus to this day in a lot of cases because that's what I'm used to doing. And if I use the bus as a citizen, I should be able to get from point A to point B that, you know, at a bus stop that look just, just as nice as by the Galleria, it should look like that in Third Ward. It should look like that at Acres Homes, it should look like that in Fifth Ward, it should look like that everywhere for every Houstonian, but it doesn't. So when it rains and it floods and you, and you just getting off on work from your low wage job, who don't wanna pay you nothing and you gotta go pick your child up from the babysitter who, who wants two hundred dollars for a day and you waiting on that bus and it's raining and you get splashed by water because drain is just jacked up, right? And you know, you might be standing there floodwater because the bus stop is next to a ditch, so that's an unsafe condition. So if you improve the conditions for people to actually exist in, in general, those three things are a start. It's not the totality of, because I have a whole top three I can give you for every subject, but the thing is, is that the safety through healthcare, the safety through infrastructure improvements, streetlights, actual sidewalks, bus stops with actual benches for people who are disabled physically, right? And to talk about disability and to make sure people understand that disabilities are not just physical and that access for all people matters, so those are the three things that would be like the top three at this moment for me.
Alright, well, you know, um, like I say, I think that one, no, one, one thing I think also is, I believe infrastructure is a ma, infrastructure and city of Houston is growing and I always say to people, man, look, I know we are car culture, but we running out of places, we running out of land, I mean, I, I do believe we are-
We're not running out of land.
Well, we running out of places where, I think we running out of places where we can put roads where they don't make, congest other roads. It's like Houston is growing, so inevitably you're gonna have to have mass-
Well, here's the thing, there are a lot of roads that could be roads that aren't roads. Um, if you go and look through like in the Brentwood area for example, that's a whole paved street where there's nothing lining the street. It's a cute street, it's right behind Brentwood Church, um, on the back end and you look, but there's no sidewalks, right? Or if you go into the southeast side of Houston where it got really flooded near Hobby, that's another area that doesn't have sidewalks and ditches, but got hit bad, remember what Harvey looked like over there before you get to South Houston, but you're still in Houston? People gotta think about those kinds of things, right? Infrastructure isn't just sidewalk construction improvement, it's also drainage, it's also addressing climate change as well. Because when you improve the infrastructure of streets, that requires you to redo drainage, that requires you to mitigate floods. That, those dominos and connecting those dots is how we can fix and, and build Houston up to a place that's safe. No, we can't stop all flooding, but there are solutions that could have been put in place. Even if we had simple pump systems like there are in New Orleans, right? The ones that work anyway.
Alright, well, so I'm about, we have to get ready and we're gonna end this, but I wanted to say, you know, I wanna say this. I'm definitely wishing you the best in your um, in running, I'm glad you're running and I encourage everybody, man, run. If you active in your community and you care, get out there and run. You know, not everybody, not everybody needs to run, but the ones who care out there fighting, get in the office, you know, because once you get in it, win or lose, you still change things.
Right.
But one thing I wanna say to you is, I wanted to just, I'm a little bit concerned because you know how we usually do this, one, I didn't get my food. You know, we, it's supposed to be a thing, whenever you come on show, you're supposed to bring something to eat.
I ain't cook.
Okay, we're gonna leave that one alone, the other thing I'm concerned about you is, I got a real concern about you, you know, this is personal. Um, if you get elected to office, you know, usually when people get elected to office, their hair go gray. You're not gonna get your hair back if you get elected to office, the stress is not gonna-
I started turning gray at twenty-four.
Okay.
I've been an activist since I was fifteen and in a few months, it will be twenty years since, well, on election day. It's my birthday, believe it or not, November fifth, I'll be thirty-five. I've been doing community work where there had been from New Orleans before Katrina and here post Katrina, um, I've been doing this.
Alright, so, so we don't have to worry about your hair?
Yeah.
Alright, we don't have to worry about you losing your hair?
And I have a seven head, so I have a, I'm all scalp, bro, I'm a bald-headed man.
Alright, so, alright everybody, well that, that, okay, that um, that settled my concern, I was just worried about your hair and I, I didn't know if you want your hair to grow back or something, because I was gonna say, you get in the office, it's gone, you know, that's why-
Oh, it's already gone. You know, fighting for community and heredity are two things that already make your hair go, we all can't be walking around like, like a Furby like you.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, see, that's why I, that's the thing that's keeping me probably from running, I like my hair, but one day I'm gonna decide, you know, I'm just gonna-
Barack still got his hair?
You know, I have gray Barack's hair, I think he uses-
He still got his hair.
Yeah, but he's gotta color it, I don't, I don't know who Mr. President I'm from.
You know, there's this thing called hems for things for people who need dye, you better take it behind the Walgreens, spend that five ninety-nine to get that dye.
Well, I tell y'all this, if I decide to run for office, you all gonna know, cause I'm just shaving my head bald, so I'm cutting out the middle man. But uh, I'm gonna let it, get to out of here with this, how can we, what can we do, how can we get in contact with you and keep up with your campaign? But uh I'm gonna let it, get to out of here with this. How can we, what can we do? How can we get in contact with you and keep up with your campaign?
So right now, you can follow me on Twitter at Ashton P Woods and you can uh search for me on Facebook at Ashton P Woods and also on Instagram. Uh Ashton P Woods for Houston, um at large five. I'm gonna be looking for y'all. I will be out in the community and please stop and talk to me and vote for me in November.
Alright. Well, hey, I'm glad you came by again. Um yeah, it's definitely always a pleasure having you here. You know you gotta come back. Hey, everybody, this has been Show One Thousand and Two, the, how to say it, the rubberneck of talk radio. Y'all can tell I ain't really rehearsed it. Yeah, it's like the rubberneck of talk radio. So y'all can catch the show, go to showonezerozero two dot com and like I say, this is an open invitation to. All political candidates, office holders, um anybody, community activists, community D activists. Couch potatoes, um people who ready to, just any and everybody. This show is an open forum for you. Just get in contact me, go to showonezerozero two dot com or chris@showonezerozero two and hey. We will definitely be back, but we're gonna keep, I'm gonna keep, you know, keep tracking you. I'm glad you decide, I'm glad you, glad you up in there. Glad you up in there. At least, you know, we got another choice, so everybody get active, get involved and. Once again, Mister Ashton P Woods, position four.
Five.
Five. Position five at large city of Houston, but we're gonna know what's up. Alright, everybody, that's all I got to say. Any last little thing you wanna say?
I care, do you?
Yes, I do. Alright, everybody, we'll talk to y'all later.